I'd like to call to order the Sparks City Council Meeting of Monday, June 8th, 2015 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Attorney.
[music]
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the invocation from you and our Secular Student Alliance, Ryan Davis, if you do the opening prayer, please.
Hello, I'm Ryan Davis, President of the Secular Student Alliance at the University of Nevada Reno. I would like to thank the members of the Sparks City Council Meeting for inviting me to speak here today. Let us bow our heads in prayer. I would like to thank you, whom in all your teachings guide us in our lives and give meaning to our existence, and endow these fine people here today to perform their duties to serve all of us. Thank you, Satan. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I'm not a Satanist, but I imagine that these words are making some of you rather uncomfortable. You probably feel that they don't represent you or further the cause of the citizens I would now like you to realize that this is exactly how the secular citizens of Sparks statistically 20 percent of your constituents feel when an invocation of any kind is given in this room. I stand before you today with the daunting task of representing these numerous atheists, agnostics, and secular individuals, and while it may not be possible to speak for them all, I ask you to meditate on the following thoughts. While the desire to be inclusive and respectful to others is something to be condoned, the reality is that we cannot represent all religions all of the time, and thus the only truly fair way to represent everyone is to not represent religion at all. The Constitution of the United States, which all members here swore an oath to uphold, was founded on secular principles and of the first of its kind. One of the cornerstones of being an American is the freedom of religion and the freedom from religion. The only way to ensure that this freedom to express our beliefs is maintained is to ensure that the government does not participate in any action that would endorse religion or even the concept of religion itself. When invocations, when religious invocations are given in a government capacity, those of us who do not subscribe to such beliefs are alienated and not represented. For people like me who are atheists and others who are agnostic or simply secular, we invoke you to not use any invocations in your meetings, but rather focus on what all of your constituents, including the secular ones, share, and that is the common humanistic desire to increase the happiness of all human beings. We should focus on doing this now, in this life. People can do this without religion, and likewise, those in government can do so without religion too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. Should all remain standing for the Pledge of Legions, please. Ms. Ratty, would you lead us?
Sure. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
We have anybody for public comment? I don't have any cards. No public comment? Okay. Looking for number five, approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? Not looking for a motion, Mr. Smith.
Move to approve.
Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Number six is approval of minutes. Consideration of possible approval of minutes of the regular Sparks City Council Meeting of May 26, 2015. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Okay, looking for a motion, Ms. Bybee.
Move to approve.
Second, Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Bybee, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the minutes of May 26, 2015. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, next will be the proclamation, Sparks Library Summer Reading Month, and Ms. Bybee is going to read that for us. Go ahead.
Whereas the city of Sparks is home to a wonderful variety of people of all ages and heritages, making up a diverse community with a focus to rebuild and move forward towards a prosperous future, and whereas literacy supports an informed and prosperous citizenry and leads to a culture of lifelong learning, and whereas the Sparks Library, as part of the Washoe County Library System, connects people with information, ideas, and experiences to support an enriched and engaged community, one person at a time, and whereas families' reading together is one of the best ways to foster lifelong learning and build literacy skills for people of all ages, and whereas the Washoe County Library System Summer Reading Program theme is "Every Hero Has A Story," and the program enables people of all ages to retain and sharpen reading skills while also fostering a love of reading. Now therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, does hereby recognize June, July, and August 2015 for the Summer Reading Program and urge every resident to take the time this summer to channel your inner hero at the library. In witness thereof, have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sparks, Nevada, to be affixed this second day of June 2015. Gino R. Martini, Mayor of Sparks.
Is there someone here to accept this?
It were supposed to be.
No one here to accept it? Here we go.
Okay. Jonathan.
Just say a few words if you want. Just tell us your name and say a few words. We appreciate you being here today.
Yeah. Okay. Thank the library director for the Washoe County Library System. I wanted to thank the Sparks City Council for recognizing the importance of reading and the contributions that the library system makes to promoting and improving literacy. Thank you very much.
Arnie, thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, next is a commendation for Amy's Flowers of Sparks for their gifts to senior citizens. Mr. Lawson is going to go ahead and read this.
And his wife to come up for now. First, and sorry, and then you, from the senior center, raise your hands for me. These are the wonderful people I get to deal with all the time. Thank you very much. You guys have a seat, Frank.
Yeah, we have to deal with you too.
Yeah, they enjoy it though, Gino, unlike the other ones. Whereas the Sparks Senior Center conducts a monthly birthday celebration on the last Friday of every month at the Senior Center on Richard's Way, and whereas the birthday recognition includes the seating of birthday celebrants at the party table, enhanced with a bouquet of fresh flowers that becomes a special birthday remembrance for one lucky celebrant, and whereas those floral bouquets have since December 1993, for nearly 23 years, been steadfastly provided by Amy's Flowers, a Sparks business owned and operated by the husband and wife team floral designers Anna Scorselli Lawrence and Frank Lawrence. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, join with the city council in commending and thanking the proprietors of Amy's Flowers, Anna Scorselli -- is that saying it right? Scorselli Lawrence and Frank Lawrence for their generosity with which results every month in putting smiles on the faces of seniors in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed, and Mayor Martini and everyone. It's a pleasure to do what we do and put smiles on the faces of seniors that we are much closer to now than when we started ourselves. So we'll be visiting you at the center and maybe we'll get our own flowers on your birthday. But it's been a pleasure as residents and longtime business owners, and Sparks means the world to us. Little that we can do, we're happy to do. So thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you. No, thank you, guys. You do so much for the community. Nobody ever recognizes you. I know you've done so much with the chamber and with seniors and all that thing, so with your business and everything. I really appreciate what you folks have done and meant the city of Sparks. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, next is a commendation for flag runners Rob Mead and Carlos Gaetan. Come on down, gentlemen. Then let me read the commendation, and then I'll let you guys say a few words. Is that okay? Okay, have a seat. Whereas Rob Mead and Carlos Gaetan began running around the Sparks Marina with American flags on June 1st, 2014, to keep firefighters, cops, medics, and soldiers supported, equipped, and employed. They take great pride in bringing awareness to our public safety and military men and women. And whereas Rob met Carlos one day at the marina when he was pushed into a fence while he was running and his flag was caught and torn, Carlos had been running behind him and assisted him that day.
Oh, no, the next day. He joined up.
Okay.
On my part.
All right, we got it. They have been running together ever since. Whereas Rob and Carlos have estimates that over 200,000 people have seen them running the track around the marina, rain or shine. They have had an amazing year of meeting great people, having homeless vets standing at attention to salute them, and thousands of people cheering them on. And whereas the men are retiring their flags and inviting the public to gather on the big grass hill at Sparks Marina on July 4th at 11:30 for a final run, they have accepted an invitation by the community of County Whitlock, Ireland, for a six-mile flag race where Rob will present his flag to fallen firefighters, Brian Murphy's wife, in a joint ceremony. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, join with the city council in commending Rob Mead, Carlos Gaetan, and all the volunteers that have run with them. Thank you for your dedication and integrity. We wish you both good luck and good health in years ahead. Thank you.
First and foremost, I just want to say we are extremely grateful for all the support and the love we've received in the community. When we started this thing, we were kind of a joke to a few people, and Carlos, he was rescued by Remza medics in the Royal Rumble boxing match in 2013, and he pretty much immigrated here for a better life and to take care of his loved ones. And this guy inspires me every time I run with this guy, just the things he says and just, the guy's amazing, and it's an honor and privilege to run with him, and he's been protecting our members since the incident on June 17th. And we did befriend some nice Irish people, well, last time I was there, and there was an advocate in Ireland, his name was Brian Murray, and he was really fundamental in bringing in a lot of money for the 9/11 Foundation after September 11th, 2001, and I befriended his son in Bray County, Wicklow, and, I mean, this family is incredible, 15 kids, and he was also a huge advocate on being equipped, full manpower, and us as the flag runners, we don't run as a protest, we don't run to say any negative messages, we just kind of run to raise an awareness, and it's been an honor and a -- kept up to date, and we will be presenting this flag to Brian Murray's wife, her name's Mary Murray, and their amazing family, and after some trash talking with the Irish military and their firefighters, me and two other buddies that have also joined in on the flag run, that will be racing with American flags and them with Irish flags, and like, I can't wait, it's going to be good times. But anyways, thank you, guys, for everything. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here today.
Carlos, you have something to say?
I do not. I just want to say thank you for all the support, and I will continue to do what I can.
Oh, one last thing. I'm sorry, guys.
Go ahead.
On July 4th, we're meeting the Marine Corps at Donald Klein's memorial tree. I went to high school with the guy, and he was an amazing dude, and the Marines will be retiring our flags. Mine is going to be folded to go to Ireland later in July, and Carlos is going to the Remza, I mean, amazing program, and, I mean, if it wasn't for them, he wouldn't be here today, sitting here and standing for this. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Not looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty.
To approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve consent items 8-1 through 8-3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, let's move on to 9.1, consideration of possible approval of mayor's recommendation of appointment to the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority Board of Trustees from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. They were Mayberry and Carey, and this will be a reappointment of Mr. Mayberry. Any comments? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
I move to confirm the appointment of the mayor to the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority Board of Trustees, which is Adam Mayberry.
Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the appointment of Adam Mayberry to the Airport Authority Board. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously, and I want to say one thing about Adam. I received a lot of correspondence from people that are very interested in the airport, and they were very commendatory of Adam and the job that he's done. They were very pleased with what he's done, been very open with them, and been the chairman once, and hopefully will be the chairman again during the next four years. So, Adam, thank you very much for what you've done for us. Appreciate it. Thanks. Moving on to 9.2, to provide direction to Chief of Police on the potential grant submission for the 2015 COPS office hiring program. Chief Allen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The reason we come before you this afternoon is to seek direction. Usually, on most of our grants, we can try to get, and get, they're unmatched and all that kind of stuff, and they're kind of those no brainers that we just submit them, apply for them, get them, and then come tell you how much money we've received from them. This one's a little bit different in that the budget was already set before this grant application came out, and there are some financials ties to us. We're seeking policy direction on whether or not to apply for this grant. A little bit of history, the Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Police and Services has been around since the early 1990s. It was formed back in that time to enhance community-oriented policing and problem-solving philosophies within law enforcement over the years. Initially, around 1996, we applied for and received two positions funded by this grant. It's a three-year grant, and those positions carried on, and over the years, through the 2000s with budget cuts, reorganizations, those positions were eliminated. Eventually, we had one, that position was eliminated, and through our community policing stuff, we had four officers, we now have one doing the work of those fours. In this grant application, historically, it was generic where it was community-oriented policing, problem-solving issues and related. Lately, the Department of Justice has put themes on each one of these COPS grants, and we took advantage of a COPS rehiring grant back during the recession where it saved six of our officers' employment during that time. The last time we applied for this, we applied and were not awarded the grant, and this application came up again today. The theme or the emphasis this year by the Department of Justice is on building community trust and those things related to what has been occurring across our country with incidences in New York City, Ferguson, Missouri, and those types of things. So, as we come before you, the things that we are looking at, one of the other issues that they did is they wanted ideas and thoughts taken out of this wonderful 116-page document, which is the final report on the president's task force on 21st century policing. And I'm pleased to announce, after reading, the primary reading of it, there's a lot of things that your police departments are already doing. The Symposium on Racing Policing was established well before these things came out, and we partnered with other local law enforcement and had that discussion and had those talks in place. So, a lot of the things that are in this we are currently doing, but we want to enhance, and so we're seeking for two positions to continue building community trust and bringing the legitimacy to the police department from the citizens themselves. And what these positions would be geared toward was, is to develop a permanent public information officer in social media aspects. We are the only agency in the valley that does not have a designated public information officer to serve their departments and the community. In addition to that, these officers would be charged with going into the community and developing the relationships community-wide, from the Wingfield Springs area all the way over to the El Rancho area, developing community partnerships, develop community relationships to enhance the ability of the police department to function to its best ability. The grants historically have been completely funded with no match, however, based on the amount of funding available and the amount of resources that are being requested, the amount is capped at $125,000 per officer for the total of the three-year grant period. So that obviously does not cover a Sparks police officer for a full three-year period, and based on preliminary numbers, it would be approximately $300,000 to $310,000 per officer for that three-year period. That would allow or have 175,000 of city funds needed to match the 125 that the federal government would be giving us. The way that the grant is structured and the way that the, when we apply now, it's due by June 19th, awards are usually given around the federal fiscal year, which is the end of September, early October, and hiring would take place hopefully by January. And the way that the grant is structured, we can charge back those funds for this fiscal year, should not have a significant impact to the general fund, and if we are awarded the grant, it would allow us proper time to prepare next year's budget to reflect the decisions that's made here today. So, just seeking for policy direction on whether or not to apply for this grant.
Questions, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, Chief, you answered a couple of my questions there. It's basically two-to-one match. For every $2, we get $1 from the federal government.
Basically, I mean, it depends on who we hire. If they come in with a family with different insurance costs, those costs goes up, if we hire a single person, the insurance costs go down. So the costs can fluctuate depending on who is hired and what benefit-driven incentives are out there.
And then if I heard you correct, you're asking for the city council to take out the general fund to subsidize your budget and not use the money for this grant inside of your budget, the 200. You're going to need a couple hundred thousand this year, so you're asking us to redo your budget and add more money to it?
That's the direction we're seeking today. The budget has been set with the number of personnel that we have. This would increase the personnel complement by two people for this fiscal year. The way that the grant is designed, we can draw up to 50 percent salary and benefit-driven expenses in the first year. I do not believe we would have to draw on that many resources this fiscal year to take out of the general fund, using a majority of the grant funding in the first year, and then it would taper off for years two and three so that we could properly budget for the next couple fiscal years.
And of the new positions that you've created, already in the budget, none of those can be changed at this point, that you won't? Because, see, I'm real confused here on a lot of things. One is that, you know, we've got, we're negotiating raises. If we negotiate the raise and no new employees get hired, that's been approved in the budget already. So it's kind of like a, you know, a moving cards around at the table that unless we go ahead and authorize, don't authorize wages, then we can hire the other people. So I think we have a whole lot of issues on the table when it comes to money here. Is that, you know, which one are you going to, which one do you want first? Do you want your new employees, or do you want your raises for the employees, or do you want the COPS grant to be funded?
Yes.
Yeah, which one do you want? All three?
The negotiation process is obviously outside the span of control that I have as the chief of police. I'm looking at unique ways that we can try to, at least try to maximize some of other people's money to enhance where I believe the police department needs to go. Enhancing our involvement into our community, especially in some of the minority groups, where we need to build the community trust so that we don't have incidences like that occurred in Ferguson, are a direction that I want to take your police department. This is a way that we can use federal money to subsidize our city money to do that. I don't have control over the wages and benefits as a police chief, so I cannot answer your question directly to say whether or not I want to spend it on employees, because I don't have that authority to spend it on employees, and that's one of the reasons why I'm here in front of you today is so that it's completely transparent and you understand what we're trying to do. I can say that the financial burden placed on the general fund this year will be minimal. I can't give you a dollar amount until we get through the application process compared to the full $300,000. That's not a $300,000 commitment this year to this general fund budget. It's over the course of three years, and this year, we can cover most of it by the way that the grant is worked.
See, swear, you know, I just don't understand is that we've approved positions, and you know you have to give us positions if we negotiate raises. That's been, that was a deal that was cut, was that all new employees would not be hired, all new positions would not be filled if there was raises given to the employees?
Yes, and we have no new sworn positions this year at all. We have two dispatchers and the covering of a grant or of a victim advocate who's already been hired. So those have all been built into the budget, and I am fully aware that we may have to delay hiring based on the outcome of the negotiations. The hiring of these people would not, these officers would not take place till earliest is January, and again, most of those costs should be covered by the grant for this first year.
My concern is that there's just so much fluctuation in the budget. I know. I mean, we don't, we've got a budget supposed to, that starts in three weeks, and we don't even know who we're hiring, when we're going to be able to hire them, when the raises are going to take effect, or anything else like that. If there's going to be raises, I just think it's just too fluid of a situation to go ahead and say, well, let's go ahead and for another, yeah, you know, this year it's 100,000 or whatever it's going to be to go ahead and cover the three officers. Next year it's going to be, you know, 200,000 to cover the same three officers. So I'm, you know, I'm kind of concerned, and I'm also very concerned, and this is, I've said this for years, getting hooked into these federal grants. These federal grants are going to be, you know, when we see what happened with Reno Fire Department when they pulled a grant, they had 13 people they had to go find, and the judge says you can't lay them off. You know, that's getting into something that is very difficult.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, on these, on these safer grants, in the past, we've been very conservative about it, and I think you've done a good job on that in letting some of them slide. If we, if we give you direction to apply for this grant and you get the grant, wouldn't you take existing officers to make them the PIO because they are, they are familiar with the department and then hire new officers in for patrol?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That answered part of my question. The other one was the, it's saying the cost to the city would be approximately $175,000. Is that over the three years, or is it per year for both of the positions, or total? Is 175,000 total over three years? Or per year?
It would be 175,000 per officer for the total of the three-year period.
Okay, so for three years for the two officers?
Roughly speaking, a first-year officer, depending, again, on the benefits that are associated to that officer, a first-year officer is approximately $95,000 to $100,000 based on education incentive, based on all the different things in the collective bargaining agreement. So each officer, and then obviously years two and three, there's merit increases which raise those costs. So on an approximate level for this, it would be about 100,000 per year per officer for the total of the three years.
Okay, and the grant would cover the 125.
And the grant would cover 125 per officer.
Per officer for the?
For the three years.
For the three years.
And again, if we are awarded this grant, we would still have to come before you as the council to do a final acceptance of the grant. So if budget things do change and there are no positions or availability to do it, we can at that time deny the grant as well.
So with the grant, you said hiring wouldn't be, we wouldn't even have these people in place till January or February, so the cost would not really be incurred until they're in place. Does the grant money, is it effective in January, or what is the cycle of the actual grant funds that we would be getting that might cover some of that cost to get us through this budget?
Typically speaking, once we start drawing down the money, that's when the three-years period will start. When we used the CHRP rehiring program money in the past, we actually didn't spend it all in the three-year period, and they were, they allowed us to spend additional funds into the fourth year because of the way the finances took place and the way that the budgeting took place. So usually typically on these grants, the timeframe doesn't start until the time that we hire and start drawing down the funds.
Okay, so we're looking at January, February?
Yes.
So that makes a big difference. It's not like today, it would be partial year with the funding, 125,000 coming in from the grant.
Correct, and that's why I say that the way this grant is structured, because it's only a partial year, a majority of it's only a partial year, a majority, if not all, of the funds that would be spent in this fiscal year for us would be covered by the grant, the way that the grant is structured. And then we would have less amount to draw down in years two and three as a percentage of the 125,000.
Okay. I support it, and I think that, I think the need, as we see every day, we turn on the news, we open a newspaper, and there's city after city after city that seems to be, you know, under a magnifying glass for community relations with the police. And I think, I think we have an awesome police department here, I think our relationship with our police is good, but I'd like to make sure that that continues and strengthens, especially like you said, with some of the communities, that outreach, I think, is well worth what we're looking at for, for these two positions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Excuse me, anyone else? Okay, looking, oops, Ms. Ratty?
I was just gonna make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to direct the chief of police to apply for the 2015 COPS office hiring program funding for two officers.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith, to have the chief move forward with a potential grant submission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes three-to-one, Mr. Schmidt isn't, four-to-one, I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt isn't. Okay, have your direction. Thanks, Chief. 9.3, consideration and possible approval to purchase various commercial insurance policies to protect the financial interests of Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. And I believe 9.4 is tied with risk management, also insurance. So, Dan, you wanna cover both, and then we'll vote on them, take questions and vote on them individually?
Happy to. Excuse me. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Dan Mehran, your contracts and risk manager for the record. Items 9.3 and 9.4 represent the annual review of, renewal of insurance policies that cover events that might occur outside the city's self-insurance limits. Item 9.3 deals specifically with Tom Wharf, and the policy in this case is the annual property and contents coverage only, their general liability is covered under the master city policy. Your staff report indicates that the rate of renewal on this one is flat. I can tell you that when we prepared the staff report, we were dealing with not to exceed numbers, and we're pleased that as of this morning, that that number's actually gone down some. So the premium, in effect, for Tom Wharf at this point is reduced by about $9,000 from what your staff report says, it'll come in at $212,069. You may remember, with respect to Tom Wharf, there's also a pollution liability policy that we carry, but that'll be renewed on three-year cycles, so you won't see that again in front of you until we hit the 2018 fiscal year. So with respect to 9.3, that's the entire report. It's a reduction in premium. With respect to 9.4, this is the larger group of insurance policies specific to the city. It includes coverage for property and contents, automotive physical damage, cyber liability, general liability, employee dishonesty, and tenant user liability policies. Currently across the board, across all policies, we're seeing an increase of right at 10%, actually a little bit less with the review that we saw this morning, specific to the city property coverage. The biggest change is with respect to the city's property coverage, and this increase in that section is due to two factors. First, the city has a claim history for the last few years against this property policy, and that claim history has affected the rate that's charged against the total values of city property. If you recall, in January, this council approved the purchase of a new vacuum truck that was related to a loss, where we were paid by our insurer, our property insurer, a sum of $362,740. That claim, along with the claim, the previous year for the fire at the Del Coberry Park and the replacement of that playground, for about $69,000 resulted in the higher rate that we're being charged against all the values in the property. The second thing affecting the property premium is an appraisal that we had done this year. We hadn't done a full-on property appraisal in my time as the risk manager here. Fortunately, the insurance company that carries our property does that appraisal almost entirely for free. We kicked in a little bit money so that we could get all of the city physical buildings appraised this last calendar year, and so that affected some of the rates, the total value that we were issuing. So that's where you're seeing the larger bump with respect to property coverage. It's a trueing up of the rates, it's making sure that we've got everything on the schedule at current value. It should be noted that we are going to appraise Tom Wharf next year, so we aren't likely to see a flat increase for Tom Wharf going into fiscal 17, but that's just a fair warning at this stage. We've maintained our levels of coverage in all areas, we've made no recommendations as to any policy or coverage changes, as the same as has been for the current fiscal year. I'm pleased to enter, try to answer any questions. We also have representatives from our broker in the room who can answer detailed questions, should there be any.
Questions, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan, on the property boiler and equipment at $212,000, the boiler, how does it fit into there? What does that cover in a boiler?
Boiler's an old monocleature. It has to do with all the large physical equipment that you have, mechanical equipment in a facility. So for instance, in this area, the large generator that's out on the lawn outside of this building is covered under the boiler property, boiler equipment coverage side of things, generators, those sort of things. But it's, it's monocleature that is specific to insurance, that goes back quite a bit of time. So it's the physical stuff.
It's the stuff, okay. So if you break that out from the property?
Yes, sir.
And what's the difference between the boiler and the equipment? You just mentioned equipment.
Would you like to get into this?
Well, I'm wondering this, is if, if we're paying $212,679 a year for property, and most of that's gotta be property insurance, what's the relation with the boiler and equipment? I mean, wouldn't it be easier just to put that money aside and buy a new boiler if it goes out, or?
In this case, the equipment schedule, if we were to provide it to you, includes a listing of every piece of equipment the city has, from delivery, from equipment trucks all the way through the generators, and boilers. It varies by the type of equipment and what we're gonna cover, but generally speaking, it's about 10,000. The vacuum truck is being the best example that this group is familiar with, that we replaced in January, had a $10,000 SIR deductible.
Okay, and why did we replace that truck?
It was damaged in an accident.
It was an accident, right, okay, that's right. So what's the difference between boiler and equipment, when you're talking insurance?
Boiler machinery, like Dan mentioned, is an older term. The newer term is equipment breakdown. Your property insurance covers your buildings and your personal properties, such as the desks and the computers, for things like fire and other perils. The boiler machinery is just another component of it, for, like Dan mentioned, in older times, at literal boilers and buildings, but today it applies more broadly to electronic equipment, like your breakers and circuit boards. It applies to HVAC equipment used to service your buildings, and it's, the property insurance is basically those two components. You might have a fire damage the building, but if you had an electrical disturbance or an arc, totally blow out a transformer on your premises or a board, the boiler machinery equipment breakdown covers that.
Okay.
And just for the record, Brandon Lewis, Wells Fargo Insurance.
I'm good.
Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question. When it shows on the, the total amount on both of these, and budget status is over budget, what were we budgeted, and why does it have over budget? How far over are we on both of these?
When we submit agenda items to the city council, there's an automatic budget checking that checks against current fiscal year budget. This renewal is for the fiscal year going forward, and we need to have this approval by the city council done before July 1st, so that we can get the applications done. We are fully budgeted for both items, in both the Tom Wharf Fund as well as the City Risk Fund.
Okay, so just because it's on today's agenda, it's this year's budget, it would be over, but because it's, we're actually not going to be spending it until our next year's budget, we're, it's in the budget?
Correct.
Okay, that was confusing to me, sorry.
Understood.
Any other questions? Okay, let's do 9.3 first. Any questions, or looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve purchase of recommended insurance policies for 2015-16 and authorize the executive, the execution of required policy documents as recommended by the contracts and risk manager.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee, to approve 9.3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, 9.4, questions or looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve purchase of insurance policies for 2015-2016 and authorize the execution of required policy documents as recommended by the contract and risk manager.
Mr. Smith?
You know, I'm gonna second, but I do have a question. Employee dishonesty, what is, talk to me about that.
Sure. Employee dishonesty is part of your crime policy for the city, and it covers the exposure if you do have an employee event where they steal money, could be securities or even other types of property from the city.
Okay.
So if you discovered that someone had been stealing for a year or 10 years, which unfortunately sometimes happens, that coverage is what would respond.
And there's a deductible on that also?
There is, yes.
What is that?
The deductible is. You have a $3 million limit and a $50,000 deductible for that coverage.
Have we ever used that portion of the policy? Okay. I'm in the wrong business.
Any other questions?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve 9.4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, gentlemen. Okay, 9.5 is consideration and possible approval to extend contract number C1090 to Polydine Inc. for the purchase of dewatering polymer. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, council members. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Todd Saxburg, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. I'm here at council today on item 9.5, requesting approval to enter into an extension with Polydine Incorporated for polymer supplied to Tom Wharf. Polymer is one of the products we use at Tom Wharf to bind solids together in our liquid processes. Our current price is $1.07 a gallon, it's about 8 cents a gallon below our regional market research, and we'd just like to extend with this same company. Our dewatering building currently, it would not be safe nor practical to conduct a polymer trial for a bid in it at this time due to construction. Is there any questions I can answer on this?
Questions for Todd. Okay, if not, looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the extension of the dewatering polymer contract through June 30th, 2016, with Polydine Inc. as recommended by staff.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Bybee, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve 9.5. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 9.6 is consideration and possible approval of bid number 1415-019 for an initial one-year contract with the possibility of four one-year extensions to Sierra Chemical Company of Nevada. Go ahead.
For the record, Todd Saxburg, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. I'm requesting approval on item 9.6 to enter into a contract with Sierra Chemical for sodium hydroxide supplied to Tom Wharf. We currently use sodium hydroxide within the plant. We've gone over the amount that we can buy on POs, and we've decided to enter into a bid, which has been completed. We currently use sodium hydroxide to add alkalinity to our processes. We have several processes that consume alkalinity, and this is the product that we put in when they've consumed all the alkalinity, and they need some extra alkalinity from Tom Wharf. We went out for bid April 22nd, opened bids on May 7th. Four companies submitted bids. Sierra Chemical bid 11 cents lower than the next closest bidder. If we were to use all of the 300,000 gallons that we projected for 2016, we'll realize a savings of nearly 30,000 by awarding the bid locally to Sierra Chemical. Is there any questions I can answer on this one?
Questions? Okay, if not, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
I move to award bid number 14-15-019 for sodium hydroxide to Sierra Chemical Company of Nevada Incorporated.
Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee, to approve 9.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, 9.7, approval of a reimbursement agreement with the city of Reno for the award of the contract to KG Walters Construction for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Nitrification System Control Valve Replacements. Mr. Drinkwater, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. Michael Drinkwater, Tom Wharf Plant Manager. We have before you a request entered to an agreement to reimburse the city of Reno for a capital improvement project at Tom Wharf. This one is, the intent is to replace some nitrification tower valves that are at the end of their service life. The valves are, deep buried valves, are also fairly large in the 24 to 30-inch diameter range, and consequently, it's a fairly expensive endeavor. Complicating that is the fact that we cannot have more than one tower offline at any given time, and we can't have it offline for very long. So when we put it out to bid, there were a fair number of constraints included in the bid documents. We received one bid from KG Walters Construction. They're a contractor known to us, they've done a lot of workforce in the past, a good contractor, and upon evaluation, we feel that it's a fair bid, and we're asking permission to award, actually to enter into the reimbursement to the city of Reno. They have already awarded their portion of this contract on May 27th. I'll direct your attention to the financial component of the staff report. You'll notice it probably says "over budget." That is a relic, and we've been here before, where when we encumber the CIP money for Tom Wharf, that typically happens a year in advance, we go into a design phase, and then, you know, sometimes an evaluation of design, construction, and that is a clerical error, which I will accept responsibility for. That money did not, did not roll forward into fiscal 15 in the budget. Now, there is actually money in the sanitary sewer enterprise fund for this project, but the fact that the staff report is telling you there's no budget is simply an error that was made, and we're certainly taking steps to make sure that does not occur again when we roll into the next fiscal year in three weeks. So I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Mike? Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Smith, I'm sorry.
Michael, I know you told us, you're gonna replace one valve, or?
No, sir. There's a total of, I think, in this phase, five valves?
Yeah, in the first phase?
Yes, sir.
Just one valve?
No, no, five.
Five. And then what's the life expectancy of these valves?
Properly constructed, which we're certainly going to endeavor to ensure they are. We can probably do 15 to 20 years if we exercise them and maintain them properly.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we had the money in the budget, how much do we have in the budget for this class?
Mr. Schmidt, unfortunately, well, no, approximately $2.2 million. That included design and construction. So we hired a consulting engineering firm, HDR, to do the design. We actually bid this project once before with a different design, where we're gonna put all the valves in vaults, and that was just unfortunately more expensive than we could justify. We had them redesigned with the regberry valves, which is what is before you today, put it out to bid again. So what will end up happening is, if you award or approve the reimbursement, that will, between the design and the construction, consume that entire budget. So for subsequent phases, we're going to have to present to JCC, and ultimately to you, a plan to how to reallocate within the Tom Wharf CIP to accomplish subsequent phases of this project.
So, and when we want to go to the other phases, how much more money do we need?
Good question, sir. Probably it, it would be on the order, and I'm thinking about the complexity of the valves that we have left. The ones that are in the current phase are the ones we deem most likely to fail, the most mission-critical valves. The ones that remain are still nonetheless at the end of their life, probably on the order of a million dollars for construction for the, for the rest of the valves. We have six towers, so each one has multiple valves.
I guess my concern comes that you had 2.2 million budgeted for everything, and you're spending $2 million just on this contract, and I imagine your, you know, your management and all that, so there's gonna be another few hundred thousand, so you're gonna be, from the original budget for just the whole project, just a single portion, you're gonna be down. And if I heard you right, you only received one bid on the project?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And to me, that's a problem, because you really don't know where your, where your, where your problem lies at. You know, is it with your engineer, your estimate, or is it that you didn't go on out and get the right, you know, get a big enough field for your contractors to go and do your work? So you're, you're betting a million dollars here, that next time around, the rest of it, you're gonna spend another million dollars, not knowing if you got a good contractor or a good price for the product or not.
I share your concern, sir. Upon reflection, we spent a lot of time contemplating this with Mr. Krutz and our Reno colleagues on this project, and it is something that we, we do need the work done. And there are some time constraints. And there are some time constraints. We, we can't have the towers offline during the winter because they take much more time. They're living entities basically, so they take much more time to respond in the winter. So we constrain the contractor to some construction windows outside of the, the deep winter months. Upon reflection, I would have preferred more bids myself, but upon reflection, we think the mission critical nature of the project superseded that concern.
My concern doesn't supersede taxpayers' money and when you come back to me and say we're over budget again, we're over budget and, you know, we just got finished raising sewer fees to go ahead and cover all these expenses and now we're just, you know, you know, a million here, a million there, precinct adds up to real money. I heard that someplace before. I don't know where that was at. But, you know, it just concerns me that, you know, all the contractors we have, and we have one contractor that goes in bits of work and it just happens to be about a million dollars over budget. So, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the total price of the project is $2,054,000. Sparks shares $644,000. It's not $2 million.
That's correct, sir.
So we're paying a third?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then this money is in the budget to do this work?
Yes.
You just have to move it forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And if you don't replace them, what happens if they fail?
If they fail, then we will have to replace them on an emergent basis. The problem we will face is similar to one we had in the Headworks emergency. The valves, the 24 to 30 inch valves, they're not readily stocked in any, any distributor. They're made to order. So 10, 10 weeks perhaps, maybe a little bit less if we, we beg, to get a valve.
Okay. Thanks, Michael.
Mr. Schmidt?
If you want to clarify that question, because I hear, I hear subject differently.
There's not the money in the 15 budget for it. It didn't get put in the CIP. You're moving other money from other places in the budget to cover this item.
There, yeah. I believe what happened is it was in the, the Tom Wharf fiscal 14 CIP, the $2.2 million for this project. And when it went out to award for the design phase, some of that money was, were encumbered. The balance was not encumbered and so at the end of fiscal 14, it fell out of the budget. That was the error that I spoke of earlier. So the, the actual cash is still in the sanitary sewer enterprise fund. The budget authority did disappear at the end of fiscal 14. Yes, sir.
So, but it's, right now, this project's nowhere in the budget either 14, 15 or 15, 16. It's not in the budget right now, right?
I understand it correctly. That's an accurate statement. Yes, sir.
So what you're going to do is you're going to take money from other projects to move it to this budget, to this item?
We will have to, to rebalance, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure we're clear on that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty.
I move to approve the reimbursement agreement with the city of Reno for the award of contract to KG Walters Construction for the Truckee Meadows Reclamation Facility Nitrification System Control Valve Replacements and Vault Construction Phase One for the base bid in the amount not to exceed $2,054,000 with the city of Sparks share being $644,339.80.
Mr. Smith? Second. Motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 9.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes three to two. Did I miss something there?
He said no loading.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Yeah, I don't know what's going on there.
Unanimously.
Okay. Anyway, we got a unanimous vote. 9.8, consideration and possible approval of an interlocal agreement with the University of Nevada for performance of an investigation into the feasibility of granular activated carbon for the treatment of dissolved organic nitrogen in an amount not to exceed $44,357. Go ahead, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Michael Drinkwater, Tom Wharf Plant Manager. You have before you a request entered into an interlocal agreement to hire the Department of Civil and Environmental Engineering to do research for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. As we're all aware, the, the biggest problem at Tom Wharf right now is the treatment of nitrogen, specifically the dissolved organic fraction of the nitrogen. We are aware that carbon columns, which is a, a treatment technique for water purification that's been around for many, many years, may be an appropriate technique to polish our effluent, to remove that last fraction of nitrogen. There's some evidence in the literature that supports it, but we don't, there's not a ton of information. One of the things we don't know is how long the carbon would live, would survive until it was exhausted and needed replacing. Obviously, that affects the, the fiscal viability of this process. So we've asked Dr. Marshawn with one of his graduate students to do that investigation for us and the proposal he provided was for the amount of $44,357. Normally, this, this dollar figure would not come before you, but it does require an interlocal agreement for us to do work with the university. Obviously, that does require council action. So I would be happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions? Mr. Lawson?
I think it's wonderful we're using our university. Well, I'm all in favor of this.
Any, any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the interlocal agreement with the University of Nevada for the granular activated carbon analysis in an amount not to exceed $44,357.
Mr. Smith? Second. We have a motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve agenda item 9.8. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Thanks, Mike. Okay, 9.9, consideration and possible approval of resolution number 3278 designating certain employees as executive. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Chris Severson, Administrative Services Director. You actually have before you five employee resolutions. To refresh your memory, there are some employees that are covered by bargaining units. That's the majority of the employees in the city. However, there are five separate resolutions that covers employees who are not part of a bargaining agreement. Those resolutions are what is before you today. Of the five resolutions, there are a number of items that are consistent throughout the resolutions and I thought if I may, I would go over those things that are consistent and then as we get to each specific resolution, I would, could let you know if there was something that was unique about that. So first of all, I should say that all these expire June 30th, so we need a successor agreement in place, resolution. And there has been no cost of living increases to these resolutions since 2007. So you'll first notice that the length of period for these resolutions is proposed to be two years from July 1st of 2015 through June 30th of 2017. They allow for a 2% cost of living increase July 1st of 2015 and a 2% cost of living increase July 1st, 2016. The benefits eligibility period for our group life and medical insurance has been shortened. Really, it's more of an administrative shortening. Our previous eligibility for benefits was you were hired and then you had to work a full month and then the month following would be your eligibility. And we're simply shortening it to the first of the month following hire for administrative and, and ease. We also have allowed for a wider representation on our group health committee. You may recall that our group health insurance committee has three voting members. Those are those represented by the bargaining units. But we wanted to expand representation on that committee, non-voting, to those people covered by resolution to have a wider representation of that committee. We also are recommending an increase of tuition reimbursement from $1,000 a year to $1,500 a year. We are also recommending a, the ability to convert annual leave hours. We have employees who have, who get up there in annual leave and we wanted to offer the ability for them to cash out up to 80 hours a year, maintaining a minimum balance of 160 to bring some of those balances down as well as to lower our future liability in that area. Last and probably the most significant change is the ability to, if you will, make our sick leave conversion portable. So for those of you that may recall, we currently have a retiree medical plan for employees covered by resolution that allow them to convert a portion of their accumulated sick leave to pay towards their medical premiums upon retirement. And it's based on years of service with the city and the number of hours that they have accrued over their lifetime employment. In the past, this conversion has been limited to the city plan only so that when an employee retires, they can convert the percentage of their sick leave to pay for the premiums to the city. What we have found, and I don't think this is anything new to this group, is that a select group of employees, and it would be those employees from age 50, those retirees from age 55 to 65 incur proportionately, disproportionately large claims to the city than either the active employee group or the employees that are, the retirees over 65 as they are then covered by Medicare. Per NRS, though, we must use everyone covered in the plan to come up with our composite rate or the rates that we charge the city for insurance to pay for our plan. What we would like to do is to offer the ability of retirees to take that sick leave conversion and to take it out and to buy it a different policy if they so choose. So they would have the option of cashing out up to $25,000 a year of their sick leave conversion, opting out of the city insurance plan and taking it most probably either to a spouse plan or to an exchange to get coverage. This would do several things. It would hopefully provide a more cost-effective solution for our retirees. It, this did come as a recommendation from the retirees on our group health committee. They said, you know, there are other options out that we, that we'd like to consider.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
You have a question? Go ahead, Ron.
Chris, just one question.
Yes, Ron.
If they opt out?
Yes.
Can they opt back in?
They can. According to NRS, they, we have to give them the availability to come back every even year. So they can go out, they can get paid out and they come back in. However, if they come back in, they would then be charged the full rate of the premium.
Okay.
So they would be still eligible to receive their annual payouts of sick leave and then turn around and pay that back to the city. The desire here is, and my next point was that it is an option only. They can still stay on the city plan. They can still use their same sick leave conversion. They can come back, but it is our desire to attempt to limit our OBR liability, the long-term healthcare costs. So those are the points that are covered under all of the resolutions that are presented to you today. The first resolution is the executive resolution and there are no unique circumstances that cover the executive resolution. So the things that I've told you are the substantive changes.
Question, Ms. Bybee?
On the retirement medical, do we cover just the employee or do we cover family members as well on retirement medical benefits?
That's up to the retiree. The retiree gets, let's say they have $50,000 in sick leave conversion, then they can choose whether they want to cover just themselves or their family or their spouse. So it's up to the, the retiree.
And, and the rates would be the same? The rates that they would pay for the insurance would be whatever our cost is right now. Like if they use their sick leave to pay for the insurance?
That's correct.
The premium they're paying would be what the city pays?
Correct.
Full or 50% or 100% of the premium?
It would pay, let me make sure I understand your question. So if an employee has, let's say, $50,000 and it's going to cost them $20,000 a year for family coverage, okay? So that $50,000 would take them about two and a half years of family coverage. Or they could elect employee only, or retiree only coverage and it would take them for a longer period of time. But it is the full cost of the.
It's the full cost. The city doesn't absorb any of the retirement insurance premiums the employee, the retiree does.
Yes, except we pay the sick leave conversion. So we're actually paying it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I remember right with the financial report, the post-employment liability of the city right now, unfunded liability is about 6.2 million in that range?
Yes.
Is that right?
Mr. Kronk, is that it?
What percentage of that 6.2 million has to do with, with sick leave conversion?
If I could, I would rely on my financial right hand.
Zero is good.
Jeff Kronk, Financial Services Director, for the record. So zero would be resulting from the sick leave conversion. They don't, they don't factor in because that's not like an implicit subsidy or one of the, one of the subsidized portions that's unpaid for. If you remember what OPEB is, is trying to calculate is what your overall annual cost is and then part of that is amortized over a 30-year period, so on and so forth. It gets kind of complicated as to what parts. But the, the sources of payments would be offsetting that. So, so the liability is one calculation and the, and the payments would be a separate, a separate look.
So we keep, we keep a whole separate books. Every single pay period when somebody accrues sick leave, we actually transfer money over to an account to sit there. So that account sits there for life, no matter what happens to anybody.
No. It's a, it's a off, yeah, it's an off book, meaning we don't fund that until it's a pays you go. So what we do is we, it's a spreadsheet, honestly, and we just keep a spreadsheet saying what that value is. So when, when a person retires, so many number of hours times their rate at that current date calculates to a value and then that value is whittled down, so to speak, over the course of time. But it's not, but it's not a pot of money, if you will.
You retire tomorrow, you have 2,000 hours of sick leave due. That would come out to, you know, $150,000, whatever it is. You know, where's that $150,000 sitting at the day that the person retires?
We budget for that every year. There's a line item in our budget called sick leave conversion that comes mostly out of the general fund, but whatever fund it's, it's generated from, that gets paid into, into the health insurance fund. So it's a revenue source.
We have another whole unfunded liability out there. We have, how many employees are retired that we have hours on the books right now for?
Hmm, good question.
I'm sorry, I don't have that number.
This could be in the millions of dollars of unfunded liability out there. So, so we don't have an account for it at all? We don't know how much that money is?
Oh, yeah. We know exactly what it is, but I just don't have that to take from my fingers.
Okay, then help me out here. Help me out here. If we know the number, how much is it? If it's not part of the 6.2, how much is it that we owe?
Well, what you're confusing is OPEB. It says nothing to do with OPEB.
Then, let's forget OPEB.
Okay.
What's right now, today, our unfunded liability for retired employees in health insurance conversion, or for sick leave conversion, how much, how many dollars do we owe?
Yeah, I'd have to look that up, but it's, it's in the three and a half to $4 million range, if my memory serves.
And that's on top of the unfunded that we already have, on top of the, the other post-reportings. We owe $3.5 million that's just out there. Not a book item, the item anywhere, but you know, you retire so that next year we'll calculate how much you're going to spend on health insurance and then we add that into the budget. And that comes out of current revenues, but we don't know, we don't know what our unfunded is, how we're going to pay for it. So we have three and a half, four million unfunded here. We have another 6 million unfunded. We actually, our total unfunded liability is $10 million.
Sort of, except that liability is not paid for every year or even it comes due every year. That's paid for as the monthly premiums are charged or, you know, come up for the, for the different funds. So out of that, you know, hypothetical 150,000 that you put up, you know, that, that could last 10 years or 15 years or eight years or however long that would take for the, the amount of the premiums.
You, you worked for the city for 30 years and you go retire. I'm going to be paying debts that are 30-year-old. I'm going to start paying debts that were incurred 30 years ago because you're taking that money 30 years ago and you're going to spend it today, 30 years later. You had a much higher salary rate than the person started 30 years ago and you don't have anything that says what your unfunded liability is for that to happen. This is a huge problem. There's, there's no other government agency that I know of that I've, you know, especially ones that I've worked for or seen around that allow you to accrue this much sick leave time or allow you to go and spend it, you know, in, in this type of fashion. And I think if we've got a $4 million liability sitting on out there with this, this is much bigger than we, the problem that we think it is. So we shouldn't be adding more to it. We should be finding a way to cap this liability.
Mr. Schmidt, I do believe that sick leave conversion is a benefit that other agencies do employ. I believe that Reno not only has retiree medical, but also has sick leave conversion. So they're doing both. We're doing one. It's not an unusual benefit. I'm not disagreeing with you as far as paying it or not, but.
And I just got finished reading the city of Reno and I sent it to the city manager's office. Their negotiation, what they just negotiated with the fire department, phenomenal job, phenomenal job when it comes to, they, 50% all-new hires, 50% of perbs, perbs out. The employee has to pay for it. Insurance, pass, post, they have to pay for it. Their long-term liabilities were slashed in that contract because they've got a $200 million problem. They have to do it. So I, I, you know, I'd love to go ahead and come up and put a city of Reno contractor that just negotiated up to one of these contracts just negotiated and we're going to take in the, take in the shorts here. And I guess my, my final question is, based upon the budget, 2% raises on all these, who does not get hired?
That discretion is left up to the city manager, to my understanding?
It was my understanding that during the budget, that all-new hires, if we give the 2% raise, does not come, we don't hire anybody. That's where that money's coming from.
My understanding is last year we had approximately $1.4 million that was available due to openings and unfilled positions and that the money for raises negotiated this year would be, positions would be held until that was paid for.
To me, there's no company in the world, company in the world that would submit to their board of directors a budget and then two weeks later submit a, a employee pay raises for their employees. There's no company out there would do that because everyone would see right through it.
That, that may be true in private industry, sir, but in public agencies, NRS actually provides for this to happen because of the dates of the negotiations and of the fiscal years, we, it's just, it doesn't happen. So not in, maybe in private, but not in public.
Yeah. And there goes the problem. We don't have to count for things. Thank you.
Ms. Ratty, do you have a question?
No. I was just going to say that my recollection is the same as, that we acknowledged that the budget was balanced based on flat and that it would be the city manager's job, basically, to figure out once the negotiations were finished and we made it through the resolution process, how we would get to the ending fund balance that we approved.
Okay, let's do 9.9 and then we'll move on to 9.10. Any more questions on 9.9 or any to motion? Not everybody at once. Not everybody at once. Ms. Bybee?
Let me make sure I'm on the right one here. Okay, I've got it. I move to approve Executive Resolution 3278 as presented by staff.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman, Bybee seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve 9.9, Resolution 3278. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one, Mr. Schmidt is a no. 9.10, anything special, Chris?
9.10 is our mid-management technical professional resolution, and there is, there are two changes that I wanted to bring to your attention, and one does lie in the area of sick leave conversion. The sick leave conversion benefit, at one point, the city was attempting to curb that back, as Mr. Schmidt has indicated. We did it first with mid-management and we said that anyone hired after 2006 would not be eligible for sick leave conversion at all. So you have about 41 employees in the city that doesn't get a benefit that everyone else does. And so our intent was to extend sick leave conversion to all of the mid-management group and to remove that sunset date of 2006. The other point was in the area of long-term acting pay. We are just simply changing around how that is paid, but not additional costs.
Okay. Questions for Chris? Mr. Schmidt?
Access sick leave for an employee of these 41 employees, what happens to it at the time they retire?
There is a cash-out provision. A certain number of years and certain number of hours may be cashed out for pennies on the dollar. I believe it's 10% is the minimum.
And in our four million unfunded liability for sick leave conversion, is this calculated into these 41 employees?
It, I submitted finance and they were not able to calculate it based on the number of employees. We don't know how many people will actually elect conversion. There are a number of people that leave the city that have a sick leave balance that never utilize it because they go on to another public employer or they go on to another plan and don't ever come back to the city plan. So when we're talking about sick leave conversion dollars, if they die or if they don't ever come back on the plan, that sick leave conversion dollars go away.
So an employee can take and work for 25 years here, go to work for some above 10 years, then come back and start their, start their sick leave conversion that they had here when they left. So again, that's even another old funded liability. We have no idea how to calculate that.
Mr. Schmidt, my understanding is it depends on the employee class that you're in, that there are certain classes of employees that if it is your last employer, that you don't come back to the cities. You would have to retire from their employment. It's in NRS.
And that's in our agreement?
It's in the NRS.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve the amended management...
I think so. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I move to approve the amended management professional and technical resolution number 3279 as presented by staff.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve number 9.10, Resolution 3279. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one. 9.11, consideration possible approval of Resolution number 3280.
Next resolution is our confidential resolution. There are currently five employees that are covered by this resolution. They are those employees that by the nature of their positions are not allowed to be an operating engineers, but they otherwise would be an operating engineers. So it's payroll and HR employees who may be involved in helping us with negotiations, documents, and because of the nature of their job, they can't belong into OE3. The only substantive change that is different with this group is operating engineers is capped at 25% paying for dependent coverage and confidential at one point was moved to 50% of dependent coverage on a grandfather-tiered scale, and we felt it was more fair to have them contribute the 25% that operating engineers does. So that we're dropping them from 50% dependent to 25.
Questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
Sorry, I have the wrong one. I'm going to take it back.
I missed one?
This is police, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have them just in the wrong stack.
You just did confidential, I'm sorry, that's my fault too. Okay.
I apologize.
Let's go ahead and do police and then we'll go back to 9.12.
There's nothing unique in the police contract.
Nothing unique in the police. Okay. Any questions on 9.11, the police?
I do.
I have one.
Go ahead.
So this is...
It's the only group that, from the other contracts I'm looking at, allows a personal day allowance.
They all have personal days. This one did change the number, yes, all the groups have personal days.
Okay, so this is just a change?
It was up to five days and we changed it to five days.
What are the personal day allowances for other groups?
It varies. In mid-management, it is three to five, and boy, confidential, I think, is three. I'm sorry, I'd have to look it up. It varies by group.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just noted that was the only one that it showed up on, so I didn't know that they, it's included already, that it's not a change. Okay, thank you.
Okay, questions on 9.11? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
I move to approve the amended Deputy Police Chief Resolution 3280 as presented by staff.
Do you have a second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Ms. Bybee to approve 9.11, Resolution 3280. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one, Mr. Schmidt is a no.
Thank you very much. They would have not been happy had I not included their resolution, so thank you for doing that. Next is confidential.
9.12 is the confidential which you just explained.
Yes, sir.
So any questions on 9.12? Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve the amended confidential resolution number 3281 as presented by staff.
Do you have a second? Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilwoman Bybee to approve 9.12, Resolution number 3281. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one.
And certainly last but not least would be our attorney resolution. The only unique things in this resolution is we are extending sick leave conversion to this group. We had some employees in the group getting it and some not, so we would like to eliminate that 2006 date for this group as we did with mid-management. We also have given them the ability to cash out tuition reimbursement rather than go through tuition reimbursement as other employees because the classes that they would go to are not normally offered through the universities, they're offered through their continuing education programs, is my understanding. And then also the ability to cash out their personal days rather than take them.
So they can cash out their personal days?
They can.
Everybody, every group?
No, sir.
Okay.
Only the attorneys.
But, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a problem with that. I mean, we're giving them a free day off and then they turn it into cash. I mean, in the future, I think we need to look at that.
Thank you.
I mean, that doesn't make any sense.
Yes, sir.
Just a comment.
Questions, Ms. Ratty?
What's the rationale?
We meet and confer with each group and we talk about what things that they would like to see. They don't get a vote like a bargaining unit, and this was one of the things that they had requested.
You know, and again, they get personal days for a reason, to take a personal day, recoup, and then go back to work. So to cash it out makes no sense.
Correct. Their thoughts were they're going to do the work whether they're here or not.
Well, that's true on vacations and everything else.
In their capacity, yes, it is.
Ms. Bybee?
How many hours of annual leave do they have?
There's a schedule in their resolution.
Is it saying 80 hours of annual leave? Is that, is that rolling?
I'm sorry, I believe you're talking about annual leave, we're talking about personal days. So the personal days, we are giving them the ability to cash out part of their annual if they would like. They have also requested that they be able to cash out their personal days as well.
So personal days as well as annual leave, and how much time do they get annual leave?
Let me look, there's a schedule. It's going to vary by person.
Yeah, but conversion of 80 hours of, do they have 80 hours annually of annual leave?
Oh, certainly.
So would that be actually vacation? Is that what annual leave is?
Annual leave is vacation, yes.
Would be your vacation time?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a point of clarification. Our craft accounting staff gave me a quick note. Our sick leave balance is 5.8 million. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Thanks.
They're watching?
You're not.
You're not.
Okay.
But I can tell you that the attorneys in Narrows are part of the negotiations. I can tell you that the attorneys in our office have consistently taken pay cuts in order to ensure that our staff would be let go and going through some of the tough fiscal times. They met among themselves and they've all, they decided among themselves that we're chief staff on, that they would forego their current salaries and take cuts. Now, I've seen some of the benefits that have gone on with other groups and I've seen what other groups have consistently received, and I'm not going to take any of that from anybody. Nevertheless, I think to the attorneys, and we're talking about the hours of, because they are professional, they don't get paid overtime, the extra hours that they put in, the weekends that they put in, I think that they were certainly entitled to even greater benefits than what they ask for here. I think that a single day off is certainly minimal compared to the time sacrifices that they make, that they stay away from their families, get stuck with me as their boss. And I don't begrudge them anything, and I think that this is a, just a small benefit in the general scheme of things.
Do you have any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion? Are you done, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the amended Assistant Senior and Chief City Attorney's Resolution 3282 as presented by staff.
Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Bybee, seconded Mr. Lawson to approve 9.13, Resolution 3282. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Thank you.
Passes four to one. Okay, thanks, Chris, appreciate it.
May I just make a comment?
Sure.
So I supported the last one because I really do respect the, I think, what has to be one of the most challenging environments for HR and finance to drive when you have so many different bargaining groups and so many different resolutions and so many different ways that things come forward. In the future, one of the things that I think we should be striving for, which I think happened a lot in what your presentations were, we're keeping things as consistent across employee groups because when they aren't consistent across employee groups is when we usually get the pushback. And so we did a lot of that on being generous in terms of allowing sick leave conversion where it hadn't been before. So the last one, I voted for because again, I respect the process, but it is a step toward, okay, now this group has it, and I'm sure that there are other department heads who could make equally compelling argument to what Mr. Adams just made for his employees. And so it does kind of get us to that place of then next year, what are we, what are we trying to do? So I know it's an impossible system for having equity or fairness, but I would just ask that if we move to the next one, that's something that we're always striving for and placing as a high value as a process point. That's all. Thank you.
That's why they call it negotiations.
But this is not negotiations. That's the thing that I'd like to, I mean, we say, but it's not. With the, it's negotiations with the bargaining groups, it's a conversation, you can call it what you want with the resolutions, but it's not negotiations, and so...
That's why they call it conversations.
Yeah. I think we should, we should have a point of view which is as consistent as possible, where we have influence.
All right, let's move on to 9.14, PCN 12010. Consideration of and possible action on a request for final approval of a plan development found in substantial conformance with the tentative approval of 1,645-acre development in the NUD Wingfield Springs. Karen Melby?
This is turned, so I'm not sure which way my...
I can't believe we're still working on this, like, I know, we change it all the time. We have to make changes in this thing, what, 50 times?
Wow. That's way different than the orientation on the docuCam. Good afternoon, Mayor Martini. And counsel, I'm Karen Melby, I'm senior planner. Before you today is a consideration and possible action on a request for the final approval of the Plan Development Handbook found in substantial conformance with the tentative approval of the handbook for Wingfield Springs. I've put on the docuCam, outlined in red here is the boundary of the Wingfield Springs Plan Development. This road coming up that bisects it is Vista. This item was originally considered by City Council on April 8, 2013. The City Council voted to table the item. Then on November 24th, 2014, the City Council granted tentative approval of the, an amendment to the Plan Development Handbook for the Wingfield Springs, which included an addition of several new villages, changes to the land use map and table, changes to setbacks within the builder lots and patio home designations. Staff has reviewed the final draft of the Plan Development Handbook, which is attached to the staff report. All the changes that has approved are approved by the City Council on November 24th, 2014. It is staff's opinion that the final approval draft of the Wingfield Springs Plan Development Handbook does not vary the proposed gross residential densities or intensities. It does not vary the proposed ratio of residential to non-residential. It does not reduce the common open space. There are no increases to the floor area proposed for the non-residential use. There are no increases in the total ground area covered by buildings, nor is there a substantial chain in any height of the buildings proposed. It is staff's opinion that the final draft amendment before you today for the Wingfield Springs Plan Development Handbook is in substantial compliance with the approved tentative handbook. Planning Commission reviewed this last month and is recommending also approval. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Melby or the applicant? Oh, I'm sorry, Roseanne.
Just one question. I know it complies with everything it's supposed to, but when they presented this last time, they pulled out one of the sections or two of the sections. Are they still out?
You mean, some of the villages?
Some of the villages.
Yes, they do.
One or two, they're still...
And they are still, not in part of this amendment.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve PCN 12010 as the final draft is in substantial compliance with the City Council action on the tentative approval of the amendment to the Wingfield Springs Plan Development and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve PCN 1201010. 010, yes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, we're going to have a closed-door session, so let's first go to comments from the public? Anyone in, comments from the public? Comments from the City Council and the City Manager? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We opened the meeting on up with a prayer as we've opened on up for the last, I'm entering into my 15 years, and I can tell you how important this is for the City of Sparks or how unique we are. In 2005, I traveled all around the state of Nevada and visited every single city municipality, I believe about 27 of them that were registered with the Nevada League of Cities. There was two government agencies in the entire state that did a prayer. We've been very, very careful for the last 15 years to make sure that everyone equal has an opportunity to do it, and I think it's, I think it's a shame that, you know, we had a prayer to condemn us for having prayers at our City Council, and I would continue supporting that we continue the process of allowing prayer at our council meeting every week. Thank you.
Ms. Bybee?
Yes, I'd like to present a request with the City Manager to look into what possibilities there would be for, for public art insurance, if there's possibility of us putting a writer on the city's policy and what that cost would be. We have an issue with our sculpture on Doyen Square right now and a problem with insurance for the artist, and I don't know if, I'd like to explore possibilities, not the city paying for it necessarily, but would the cost be better handled by the artist or other persons interested in covering the insurance for that sculpture, so that we could maintain it and further artwork? I know we're working on future policy with public art, but if we could explore the possibilities, if that is a possibility, of what the cost would be, or legally, how we'd stand, if you could bring information back to our next meeting. Thank you.
Comments? Anyone else?
Okay, as far as the prayer goes, Mr. Driscoll and I received the letter, and these folks asked if they could come and have their say, too, and we talked about it, and if we're going to have people come and do prayers for us, I thought it was significant enough that these folks had their say, too. Constitutionally, there's no reason why they shouldn't be able to do that. Everyone has their own way of worshiping or not worshiping, and I thought it was behooved us to let them have their say. So, we put them in the schedule like we would put anyone else. If they call again and want a schedule to be on the program, we will certainly do that. I think it's their right to do that, and I think it's our right as a council to have a prayer, and I appreciate that we have a prayer. So, I don't want to do anything to mess with that particular right that we give, because there's a lot of people out there trying to maybe dissuade us from having a prayer, and I think it's a good thing to have. So, after discussion with Mr. Driscoll, we decided it was the best thing to do, let it go ahead, and that way, everybody has their own say.
Okay?